We good? All right. I'd like to call the Tuesday, March 16th, meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. To order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is opening in reading of bids. Infrastructure, planning and growth. Proposals for county comprehensive plan.
Hi, Abby Wiles, Director of Area Plan Commission, Department of Infrastructure, Planning and Growth. Sorry for the delay, I wasn't sure if Marie or you or I should read the proposals received, but Marie did review all the submittals this morning and provided me with a list of companies that submitted proposals. I'd like to note the companies that we received proposals from.
Outstanding.
Beckett and Raider out of Ann Arbor, Cameros or Camiros out of Chicago, Housiel Levine Associates also out of Chicago, HWC Engineering out of Indianapolis, Innovative Planning Carmel, Indiana, the Lakota Group from Chicago, McKenna Associates, Northville, Michigan, Planning Next out of Columbus, Ohio, Rundle Ernstberger Associates out of Indianapolis, Sheila Murphy, Phoenix, Arizona, and TSW Design Group out of Indianapolis. I will note for you all and everyone on the call that a number of these proposals have sub consultants that are contracted with them. Some have local presences, have a local presence and others do not. But we will only know who is participating in which proposal after the selection committee meets and reviews those. So I would just be asking for, I believe, confirm this with counsel, but a motion to refer these to staff to go through the selection committee process and then bring back a recommendation to you all per the timeline in the RFP.
Are there any other entities who believe they've submitted proposals who did not hear their name read? All right, hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to accept these proposals.
Second.
If motion is second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
You have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I was just going to say the selection committee will have a job to do reading all of the proposals.
Right.
Outstanding. All right, moving on to reports and requests. First item on the commissioner's portion is the accounts payable docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next is, we get to come to the fun portion of our agenda. Not that it's not all fun, but this is the most fun portion of our agenda. And we'll start with our citizen of the month, Commissioner Fleming.
Well, the citizen of the month, I really like to make options for that. And I was really, really happy that the Washington girls basketball team went down to the state. And so I wanted them to be citizens of the month. So yes, they are, yes, I'm so proud of them, so proud of all the girls teams that win and, you know, everything, and I'm very proud that they're at the state level. So congratulations to be citizens of the month and how well you did. And again, you know, I have been there to Washington a lot doing volleyball officiating as well, helping, and disappointed though that there aren't so many people that can watch them in the past, but at least you did that and you went down to the state level, yes. So happy about that and congratulations on being the citizens of the month.
I think we'll also add very briefly that it's amazing that this team not only just energized the Washington High School, but the entire West Side and the entire city of South Bend, that they really brought to life and it was great to see so many people supporting them. And so now I'm glad we're able to, in some small way, support you all.
And energize St. Joe County.
Right.
And I believe we have some of the Washington coaches, athletic directors and some of the players themselves. You're up in my upper left corner, so if y'all want to say something. Have the, have the girls introduce themselves, that'd be great and appreciate everything y'all have done.
All right, um, this is Coach Steve Reynolds, I'm the head coach for South Bend Washington High School.
I don't think we're able to hear.
I'm gonna let the girls introduce themselves.
I can't hear you right now.
And we do wanna say, uh, I thank you.
Yeah, if y'all can hear, we're trying to find the volume from y'all. Is there any other administrative people from the school corporation, Milt Lee, you on?
They didn't hear us.
Okay.
Hold on just a minute, can you hear us?
All right. Well, again, we appreciate everything, if, maybe if you can stand up and fix something there?
Yep, can you, can you hear us?
Oh.
Can you hear us?
Giving a thumbs up, does that mean you can hear them?
Okay, yep, um, so. I think so, I got some thumbs up. Just one more time, you can, okay, awesome. Um, my name is Steve Reynolds, I'm the head coach of the girls' basketball team here at South Bend, Washington. Um, I'm gonna have each person come up, or each team member and coach come up and introduce themselves. And then we'll have, uh, we'll say a thank you right at the end.
Hi, I'm LaRonda Kendrick and I'm number thirty-two.
The girls are standing and saying their names, so everybody that's on can hear with the exception of us, which is fine. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Okay, do you wanna, do you wanna start that over?
Hi, I'm LaRonda Kendrick and I'm number thirty-two.
Hi, I'm Mila Reynolds, I'm number fifteen and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Tamara Allen, I'm, and I'm a junior.
I'm number eleven.
Hi, I'm Leanna Hudson, I'm number fifty, I'm a freshman.
Hi, I'm Rashada Jones, I'm number two and I'm a sophomore.
Hi, my name is Francesca, I'm number thirty-three, I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Maya Robinson and I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Lauren Gillen, I'm number twenty-one and I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Maya Reynolds, I'm number one and I'm a sophomore.
Hello, I'm Coach Kears, I'm one of the assistant.
Hello, I'm Coach Eddie and I'm another one of the assistant.
So, um, thank you so much, again, I'm Coach Steve. Thank you very much for the honor of being citizens of the month. We take that with pride. Just so you all know, we are currently in the middle of an I Dream Tour, which we go to the elementary schools and the middle schools in South Bend. We currently, I believe, have ten or eleven. And the next, last week and this week, we're going into the schools just to inspire the kids and, and give them an opportunity to meet the girls and really just encourage them to dream. So that is our gift back to the community because you're right, they've been so supportive to us. So, again, thank you all for recognizing us. We, again, we take this with pride and really appreciate you reaching out, you know, to us and giving us an honor like this, we don't take that lightly, so thank you.
All right, Coach, appreciate that, we'll, uh, once we get our plaque and some pins, I'll be out there to present that to you and to the girls and then we get a picture and you're on our Hall of Fame, okay, Doug can do that.
Love to do that.
And then, um, also, a former 2012 Washington graduate who did also play in a state championship and a national championship and has a Super Bowl ring, sends his congratulations. Hope you can all follow in his footsteps and keep on doing what you're doing. It's very impressive that you go out to the community and to the kids. So everybody keep up a good job for everybody that's going to the next level. We'll be following you when the college of your choice and Coach, we want to see you back here next year. And Milt Lee, are you on now?
I am.
Okay.
I am.
You've got less than ten minutes, so go ahead, sir. As the new athletic director of South Bend Schools.
It'll take ten seconds, it doesn't, this today begins my official first full week as the director of community programs and K-12 athletics. And I can't think of a better way to start my first week than to celebrate the success of the Washington High School girls' basketball. They dared to dream and I'm excited that they're passing along that dream. And this is from a 1983 Panther who played football under George McCollum, played basketball under John Salmas. So I, I'm busting with pride every single time I see the green on the floor and I'm even prouder to see him in this setting. And what a great representation that these young girls have, have displayed for not just the school and not just the community, but every single young girl that's in this community and other communities as well, representing beautifully throughout the state. And I couldn't be prouder and I was just saying Panther pride.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens like to convey their congratulations? All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you all, best wishes.
All right, moving on to youth of the month. I'm very proud to announce that Mary Kate Pruitt from St. Joseph High School is this month's youth of the month. She is a prolific swimmer for St. Joe. In her sophomore year, she, she became the first ever girl swimming state champion from St. Joe High School. And she won the first of three state titles in the 500 freestyle. She's a twelve-time All-American for swimming, a four-time Scholastic All-American for swimming, state record holder in multiple events, first team all-conference all four years, first team all-state for three years and second team as a freshman. As amazing as Mary Kate is in the pool, she is equally amazing out of the pool. I mean, she's achieved high honors each semester during high school. She's named a St. Joseph Scholar, which is one of the highest academic achievements you can have. She's a member of the National Honor Society in St. Joe. She also volunteers at the Center for the Homeless, the Northern Indiana Food Bank and Unity Gardens. I can also speak on behalf of two St. Joe teachers, Mr. K and Mrs. Fink. My two oldest children who teach there have nothing but great things to say about Mary Kate, both as a person, as a student and as an athlete. So congratulations, Mary Kate, I see the Pruitt's are on the call. If there's anything you'd like to say or add? I think we're gonna get you unmuted.
Sure, no, thank you, this is David Pruitt and my wife Kristin's also on the line. And, and we just wanted to say thank you so much for recognizing her. This is, this is really something special, it's always great to get the recognition from the hometown. And I think, just to echo what you said, it's, it's great that she's done so well in the pool and we didn't know what we were getting into when we started this swimming thing. We do a Mean Doggy paddle and that's about it, but it's tremendously hard work that she's put in since about ten, you know, practicing a couple times a day for a couple hours. But I don't think she'd be here if she had a reputation for being all about herself or she wasn't humble and kind of recognized all the good things that make it possible to do what she did. So I guess just thank you again for this honor, it's, it's great. And thank you also just for making this a great place to live. We moved back here in 2003 just because we wanted to be in a place that really valued family and hard work and it's been one of the best decisions we've made. So thank you so much for, again, for this honor, Mary Kate. I'm at school with her, I just, I work a couple, couple blocks away, so.
Thank you for this award, it really is a huge honor. Like my dad said, it wouldn't have been possible without the support of my coaches and my community. And it really, both support systems really allowed me and my teammates to compete at the highest level. So we couldn't be more thankful for that.
Awesome, and Kristin, is there anything we can unmute? Kristin, if she'd like to add anything?
I just wanna add that she likes St. Joseph County so much that she's gonna stay here for four more years and continue swimming just down the street, so, so we're, we're very happy that she's sticking around.
Yes, we're looking forward to her swimming at Our Ladies University next year. So that'll be fantastic to watch even more accolades. And then we'll, as Commissioner Dieter mentioned for Washington, we'll, once we get the plaque, I'll schedule a time hopefully at St. Joe, we can go and award this and, and give you further recognition. So thank you very much for everything you do, not just in the pool, but for our community as well, thank you so much.
Thank you, best wishes, you guys.
Yeah, congratulations, I think the normal athlete like Mr. Augustino and everything, they don't realize the dedication and the time and the effort that goes to jumping in the pool at five in the morning and swimming before school and after school. And again, thank the parents for all the tournaments and the travel and every place, but it's, it's truly amazing because that is a very difficult sport and you've exceeded unbelievably well. So congratulations and keep up the good work and we'll see you in a week or so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, now, business of the month, Commissioner Dieter.
Sure, I think we have Mr. Dominguez on there. It represents Leo's Family Restaurant on the curve down in Lakeville, it's a phenomenal place. If you have never eaten there, I've been there several times. And I think you're on, if your mic is ready to go, just tell us about your business, which has been there since 2012, named after your father, but I'll let you talk about that, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, everybody, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to be here. We are very glad and happy that we are na, being named our business of the month. We started, we opened first back in 2012, it was just a dream. Leo has been, my dad has been in the restaurant business for over thirty years and he had always a dream, his first restaurant failed like about fifteen years ago in Michoacan, so he decided to give it another try. So we, we are together in this and he's a very hardworking man. So like immigrants, we come from, we're originally from Mexico City. And it's sometimes really hard when you come to this great country because of language. So he does not speak very much English, but that didn't stop him from pursuing his dream. And now, eight years later, after 2012, we have grown really good, we are doing very good. The community of Lakeville has, and the surroundings have been really, really nice to us. We work hard every day, you know, try to make people feel at home when they come to it here. Leo is, he knows a lot about, like a chef, all these recipes that he learned throughout the years. And we try to help the community as much as we can, like, you know, donations and they do party in the park every once a year and we donate food. And, you know, we try to help their community as much as possible because it's, it's only thanks to them that we are who we are. So we are very, very thankful for everything that we have received from their community and also from this great country. We are very blessed to be here and we wanna give back as, as much as possible.
Right, and again, the community down there has known that you've given thousands of dollars helping people in the community, you guys were delivering all the way down to Bremen, which is a, a nice of that. Thirteen to fourteen people working there and you serve, serve the lower south of St. Joe County tremendously well. So keep up the good work, we appreciate that and all your employees and I'll see you, maybe Pete don't wanna come along for a breakfast, but we'll see you next week.
Thank you, yes, great.
And thank you so much for all you do for, for the Lakeville and that, and the southern portion of the county and for everyone as well, so thank you so much for all your hard work.
And congratulations.
All right. Now we'll move on to, we have a couple of appointments to make. First is Area Board of Zoning Appeals, I will now open up nominations.
The nomination for DG Tavernier.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations. And all those in favor of appointing DJ Tavernier to the Area Board of Zoning Appeals to a four-year term that will end December 31st, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next, Hotel Motel Tax Board Appointment, I will now open nominations.
Could nominate Scott Reith.
Second.
We have motion to second, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations. All those in favor of appointing Scott Reith to the Hotel Motel Tax Board of South Bend to a two-year term ending December 31st, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Next, first amendment to St. Joseph County 4-H Fairground Right of Entry Agreement, Counselor.
Thank you, sir. By this agreement, we will extend the relationship we have with the 4-H for them to continue their testing through at least June 30th of 2021. I see Dr. Einturs is on the line and others, and I see Mr. Patel. And I do wanna thank Mr. Patel for being so responsive and working through the issues. This agreement and the next one, Hodges has been great to work with on, on this project in representing the hospital and moving this project forward. So he's, he's just been a pleasure to work with, so I wanna thank him specifically. This agreement, just, it's an amendment to the prior agreement, it seems like a good project. If Dr. Einturs or another medical professional would like to comment, that might be appropriate too.
Are there any comments? I think I can just speak a little bit to that we're extending this, this was a way we could increase access to testing for citizens of the county. I mean, as we know from a COVID standpoint, the key is testing and, and vaccines. Is there anything we can do to ramp up both sides of that? I think it's been extremely beneficial to this agreement, so if there are no other questions or comments.
Commissioner Castellini, if I may speak, Hodges Patel, the director of, thank you, the director of marketing, communications and advocacy for St. Joe Health System. We really appreciate the partnership that we've had with the county in this effort to make sure that individuals in the county who need to be vaccinated have an opportunity to be vaccinated. One of the challenges that we had previously is the location, there's a bottleneck of traffic and we had to seek the help of the county sheriff with this location since December. The fairgrounds, it's definitely improved safety. We have had the privilege to test over forty-six hundred residents in St. Joseph County since its inception in, in December. And we wanna continue to do that. And so this collaborative partnership between the health system and the county makes this effort possible. The fairgrounds have been an outstanding partner in this for us. And then the other thing I wanna mention is the health system thus far has vaccinated, this is separate from the testing piece, vaccinated over thirty-four thousand residents in St. Joseph County since about December, December eighteen. So again, thank you for, for everyone's help in this effort, it's been a team effort, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Bless you, is there a motion?
Motion to approve this.
Second.
Motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Then we have a follow-up, Second Amendment COVID-19 Screening and Specimen Collection Service Agreement.
By this agreement, we're extending the, the, the testing and specimen collection that's being performed by the, the medical center. This agreement will be effective on March first and then it runs through June 30th of 2021, the amount of $20,000 a month, which is a $5,000 decrease from the monthly on the, the original agreement.
Any questions or comments? I'll note once again, this is just a great partnership with St. Joe Health Systems, helping keep our community safer and healthier, so we're glad that we can be participatory in doing just that. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this.
Second.
We have motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. All right, moving on to bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council at a public hearing held on March ninth, 2021. Council passed the following ordinance, this ordinance is eighteen, twenty-one, a salary amendment for the auditor. Ordinance nineteen twenty-one also for the auditor, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one amendment for the commissioners, twenty-one twenty-one amendment for the Health Department as well as twenty-two twenty-one. And twenty-three twenty-one, I believe, was the transfer and appropriation. And twenty-seven twenty-one is, relates to hazard pay for election board, election workers. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve all these ordinances that was just mentioned.
Second.
We have a motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next, request approval of Nihart Interim Gatsby seventy-five actuarial update for the Solid Waste Health Insurance Plan. I'm not sure who's, John should.
This is, this is John Murphy, I could speak to this. We need to hire Nihart to do a, a report for us, an actuarial report for the Solid Waste Management District. The cost is $1,500 and we'll charge it to their health fund because it's related to health insurance. It's kind of a pressing matter, we need to get this report finished by the end of the month. So we ask for your favorable consideration of this.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion to approve the update for the Solid Waste Health Insurance Plan.
Second.
We have motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next, we have Infrastructure Planning and Growth, the consent agenda. I will note, we have surety releases for North Bridge Valley Section One, Section Three and Section Four. And we have irrevocable, irrevocable letters of credit for the hills at St. Joe Farm, for Wood Section Three, Cloverleaf Farms Section Three. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next, request approval of Resolution R-9C-2021 FEMA Home Buyout Grant Purchase Agreement Amendment. Mr. Chris.
Good morning, Chris Brown, with Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the seventh and eleventh floors. Before you, this morning is a resolution to amend an existing purchase agreement. This is, as we work with property owners and giving the current situation with the market and trying to find new homes, we needed to be a little bit flexible with some of these properties. So before you is an amendment to a purchase agreement for a property we are closing on this week to allow for a thirty-day period from the date of closing. I also included an expected schedule that also details the FEMA required demolition schedule. So we've got ninety days from that day of closing, so we've got plenty of time, I think, to allow this flexibility. So staff requests approval by the commissioners, be happy to answer any questions.
Are there in fact any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
A motion to approve the amendment to this practice or purchase agreement.
Second.
Motion second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, next up, we have request approval of St. Joseph County Highway 2021 Annual Bid Awards for drainage pipe and structures, guard rail and bridge materials, traffic paint and signage materials, miscellaneous aggregates, liquid betuminous materials, fuels, oils, lubricants and miscellaneous materials and betuminous patching materials, Mr. Sky.
Good morning, Sky Metters, County Engineer, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. We have six items here for our annual bids. We will go through each one and vote each one separately, I guess is how that's been done in the past. The first on the item up is for our bids for drainage pipes and structures, guard rail and bridge materials for the 2021 calendar year. We accepted bids from American Timber Bridge of Portage, Indiana, Tobacco Metal Culverts of Francisville, Indiana, James Drew Corporation of Indianapolis, Indiana, and Metal Culverts of Jefferson City, Missouri. We recommend all bids be accepted. By accepting all bids, it allows the county to select from the lowest available bidder during project, any project design phase and for any type of structure being built in 2021. So with that, we would request your, recommend these bids be accepted.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve these bids.
Second.
Motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
All right, next up, we have bids for traffic signage and miscellaneous paint for 2021. We received bids from Allstate Coatings, Ozark Materials, Ennis Flint Inc. and Davies Imperial Coatings. Bids for traffic signage were received from Osborne Associates. Upon review of the bids submitted, it is recommended the paint and bead items be awarded to Ozark Materials as the lowest and most responsible bidder to supply paint and to Osborne Associates as the lowest and most responsible bidder to supply signs. We recommend accepting all bids for both paint and signs to purchase from the bids for both paint and signs to purchase from the lowest and most responsive bidder depending on availability and shipping and handling costs.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve these bids. Acceptance.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next up, we have bids for miscellaneous aggregates for 2021. They were accepted on, submitted on March, March 2nd, 2021 from Phoenix Services, Clink Trucking, Inc., Aggregate Industries, and Reith Riley Company, Inc. There's a bid tabulation for your information, and that bid tabulation breaks things down based on where the garage is at and travel and so forth. So the low bidder for each garage varies by items and is highlighted in that bid tabulization. We recommend accepting all bids except for the bid from Phoenix Service, who did not submit the required Form 96, which makes that a non-responsive bid. And by doing, accepting all other bids, we may purchase from the low bidder depending on availability.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve all these bids he recommends.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Liquid Batuminous.
Okay, we're over halfway there. Item number four, bids for liquid batuminous materials for 2021. We received bids from Bitmat Products of Ashley, Indiana, and Asphalt Materials, Inc. of Indianapolis, Indiana. Upon review of the bids, we recommend all bids be accepted so that we may purchase from the low bidder depending on availability.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve all these bids be accepted.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Fuels, oils, et ceteras.
Thank you. Bids for fuels, oils, lubricants, and miscellaneous materials were received from Belman Oil Company, Inc., Yoder Oil Company, Sea Alliance, Gladio Energy, Seri's Solutions, and Petroleum Traders Corporation. We recommend awarding Yoder Oil Company as a low bidder for all kindred items, and Coal Alliance as the lowest, most responsible, most responsive bidder for diesel fuel and gasoline, as Coal Alliance was the only fuel bidder to provide all the required documentation per the specifications for fuel. We further recommend accepting all other responsive bids in the event that the low bidder is unable to supply materials when requested.
Questions or comments? Motion?
Motion to approve this bid.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Finally, Batuminous Patching.
Bids for batuminous patching materials were received from Milestone Contractors North, Inc., Fenden Brown, Inc., and Reith Riley Construction Company, Inc. Upon review of this bid submitted, it is recommended that the items be awarded to the low bidder as highlighted in the attached bid tabulation. We further recommend accepting all bids and purchasing from the low bidder based on availability.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept all these bids.
Second.
Motion second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sky. Next, request approval of change order number one, final for Sage Road Culvert Replacement.
What we have before you today is a request to approve the change order, which is actually the final change order for culvert replacement that was performed on Sage Road. The original contract amount was $16,800. During construction, two tiles were uncovered that we had to tie into the new pipe, which is the, excuse me, which is the reason for the change order of $2,482.30. And that makes a final contract amount of $19,282.30. We have reviewed this and recommend approval of these changes in this final change order.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this change order number one for the final Sage Culvert Pipes Replacement.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval of Engineering Services Supplement Agreement Number One, Pierce Road Corridor from US 31 to Miami Highway Federal Aid Project.
While separate contracts and requiring separate votes, the next two items sort of, one stems, one is, makes the other one necessary. What we request is supplemental agreement increases the fee 192,000 for the professional services agreement for revised amount not to exceed of $1,344,350 for the Pierce Road project. The adjustment is a result of transferring the appraising and right-of-way management services into preliminary engineering to maximize available federal funds in the project and comply with fiscal years. As you'll see in the next item, mainly what we're doing is we're moving some fees from the right-of-way service agreement into the professional service agreement so that we can do some things and comply with the fiscal year requirements that NDOT has. We have already been through NDOT, and they approved us transferring this for these services into the engineering contract for obligation in fiscal year 2021. We have reviewed this agreement and recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Engineering Services Supplement Agreement Number One for Pierce Road.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Then, follow-up request approval of Right-of-Way Services Agreement Amendment Number One, Pierce Road Corridor from US 31 to Miami Highway Federal Aid Project.
This is the second portion of that item, as I mentioned before. This is amending the right-of-way services contract that we have with the Lockmueller Group for the Pierce Road Corridor. This is supplemental agreement number one, and what this is asking for is decrease in the fee, in the fee for that project of 199,619 for a revised total amount not to exceed of $10381. So ultimately, when you look at it, it ends up being, the contract amount total ends up decreasing somewhat due to some contingencies and so forth. So we have reviewed this supplemental agreement and recommend your approval.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A question. I mean, you just said that the one agreement was agreement number one, but this would be agreement number one, too?
Yes, the, the first one is supplemental agreement number one to the engineering services contract. This is supplemental, what we're on now is supplemental agreement number one to the right-of-way services contract. So they're two separate.
Okay.
Agreements.
That's what I saw there, right-of-way services. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Well, a motion to approve this right-of-way services supplemental agreement number one for Pierce Road.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Sky.
Thank you.
Next, request approval of Addendum Number Two, Antero Group, South Bend Freight and Logistics Strategy Implementation Proposal. Mr. Bill?
Good morning, Bill Shalio with Economic Development with offices with the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floor. Before you today is a professional services proposal for the Antero Group. This is addendum number two for the South Bend International Airport Multimodal Freight Master Plan Project. As we've been working with the airport over the last couple of years on this project, we are now at a point where we have the airport's feedback and every other feedback required for this project. We're now looking to just close out the project, finalize the plan, and, and get it in a position ready to produce for, for public consumption and for development in that area. The contract amount for this proposal is to be billed on a time and materials basis, not to exceed $7,495. Redevelopment Commission approved this proposal at their meeting on March 9th. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there in fact any questions?
I've got a quick question. So the total cost would be the 7,400? Or will there be more costs involved in this?
No, this is, this is the final amount. This will close out the project at that amount of $7,495. We spent previous to this.
Okay.
So the contract in total is much larger, but...
You know, ballpark figure how much has been spent there already?
I'd have to, I can get you that number. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
And at the end, is that all city-owned property, or it'll be county, or a mixture of both?
It's, it's largely in the unincorporated area. There are some properties west of Lincolnway between the bypass that are in the city limits. There are some properties that, that have been in the city, have been deannexed. So it's, it's kind of a weird combination of in and out in that area.
This would be basically everything south of the, the trailer park that's still there?
Well, yeah, so it would be in that southwest quadrant. So everything within the Lincolnway belt up and around, and then everything between Lincolnway as it goes north-south to the bypass.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this addendum number two for the Antero Group for the South Bend International Airport area.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Finally, request approval of Olive Road Master Planning Supplement Agreement Number One, DLZ.
Yes, so this proposal is to expand in the Olive Road Master Plan Project. We had gotten that project approved through the Redevelopment Commission and also through the council, and then shortly after we got it approved, or through the Board of Commissioners, I'm sorry, is shortly after we got it approved through the Board of Commissioners, rezoning came through for a, a new freight and logistics project south of General Stampin' and Metalworks. That project, which could be up to 800,000 square feet in size, will cause a tremendous amount of traffic that could occur on, on Old Cleveland Road. So this supplemental agreement is specific to study the intersection of Old Cleveland Road, Nymphs Parkway, and Olive Road. So this adds another $4,900 to the contract for a total not to exceed amount of $65,900. This is being paid for by the TIF funds, and we'd ask for your approval of this expansion of this contract. Any questions? I would be happy to answer them.
I do have a comment. I appreciate your work in this. I mean, we, we've realized this has been a longstanding issue with traffic, and as we see hopeful further growth and development, it's going to do nothing but put more pressure on the local traffic system. So we need to find a way to mitigate that and do whatever we can in partnership with the city of South Bend, and finally begin to fix that issue that we know has been longstanding. So I appreciate the effort to help do that.
Me, too.
Is the, the 2010 South Bend study, did that include going north up to Adams Road?
So there is, so we're, we're studying right now specifically.
Right, I know where you're looking, but was it 2010, I believe?
Oh, the Airport 2010 Plan did actually propose going up to Adams Road, and there has actually been some right-of-way acquired in that corridor for that stretch. I would imagine, once we complete this, there may be a, a future study coming down the road to, to go back and reexamine the, the needed acquisition to complete that stretch of project.
And that was the lack of the city's aggressiveness to get interchange at Adams Road. Mr. Hammond, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this, the expansion of this contract.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Bill. Moving on to old business, there is none. We move to public comments. I should have announced this earlier. If there's any member of the public that wishes to speak, if you would please raise your hand as well, and we will unmute you and let you make a public comment. But first up, we have Ms. Abby Wiles.
Yes, I apologize for, for jumping up again. After looking at the proposals in my email, there is one additional proposal that was received that wasn't noted for the comprehensive plan. Oh, sorry, Abby Wiles, Area Plan Director, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth. It is from the Design Workshop out of Denver, Colorado. An electronic copy was submitted via email, and I did confirm that hard copies are on the 7th floor. So it was received prior to the deadline. We just missed it in the list.
And what was?
Well, I'm sorry, what was the name of that company again? The Design Workshop.
Design Workshop?
Out of Denver, Colorado. So that makes 12 total.
Okay, then do I have a motion to accept this additional bid?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Are there any other public comments from our friends joining us virtually?
I don't know how to raise my hand. I'm sorry.
You, you've, you're live, buddy. You're live.
Amazing. Wow. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. We had a tragedy over here last week. A number of people I've spoken to were very warmed by Commissioner Dieter's hands-on approach and coming over to show an interest in getting to the bottom of what, what happened over here. And I just wanted, wanted everybody to know that, that the community is very appreciative of Derek and his, his actions last week and his actions going forward. Thank you, Derek. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dan.
So sorry he had to do that.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, a motion to recess is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Tough luck. We are recessed.